Welcome to the class, let's go ahead and get started. We've got a packed house and a full agenda. So, I want to make sure everyone gets home before it gets... The freeze warning kicks in. Welcome to March in Missouri. Okay. Consent agenda... Sorry. Welcome to the Christian County Library Trustee's Meeting. If anybody needs tonight's agenda, it is in the room between the two doorways over there and can be found on the table in there. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda to discuss individually?
I would like to remove the minutes from the consent agenda.
Okay. So, we are going to make a... Can someone make a motion to vote on the consent agenda without the minutes?
I will make that motion to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes from the February meeting.
Alright.
Wait, you said second? I didn't hear.
Oh, thank you. Is there anyone have any question, anything else that needs to be removed? We good? Alright, I'll take a vote. Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Trustee Sisinski.
Aye.
Alright. The consent agenda minus the minutes have been... Has been adopted. We will table the minutes because they're wrong, correct?
Table the minutes to remove trustee in attendance. I was not in attendance last month and I did not vote.
Okay.
You could also just make a motion to approve them as amended in this, like as...
Right now.
With the amendments.
Great, let's save time for next one.
Yep.
So, move. Is there a second?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Alright. We'll vote. Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Trustee Sisinski.
Aye.
Alright, great. Thank you Tori and Renee for helping with our part of the registry procedure. Administrative highlights, I know they're unpresented, but we do have an introduction.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Nick Heaton, our new Ozark village manager. Welcome to the community and to Christian County Library. I think he's been on our social media.
You're already famous. Welcome Nick, thank you for joining our community. We're excited to have you.
Excited to see you.
Good. Alright. Full business, parent resource webpage.
Okay. Okay. So, this is a project, a new page for our website that has been in the works for about a year. Although some ideas for it have been around for a few years, just we started prioritizing it about a year ago. So, it is not live yet, so you're seeing a draft of this. And what we've done here is try to put... We have lots of resources and lots of information and libraries in general struggle with how to get all of the information to everybody in an organized way on the website. So, this is a new page created to specifically with the audience of a parent in mind. So, everything that is there is geared for a parent who is navigating the library both digitally and in person to help them find what they need for a variety of things and then help their children navigate as well. So, at the top, you'll see there's... We're still tweaking some of the wording on a few things and we'll have a few slides added and stuff throughout the next few days. We're hoping to make it live next week and we'll put out some information about it when it is live, but wanted to give you a preview. So, we have several sections and so the headers for those sections are those colored rectangles along there. And then we'll have the book list with titles that are relevant to parents, mostly it's nonfiction adult material with topics related to parenting. And then below each of these sections are the ones from that menu up above. So, within each of these sections, there are slides that you can scroll through to get different information. And a lot of this is not replicating... Instead of replicating all the information in these slides, we're linking out to it. So, try to kind of minimize the amount of text. So, try to put it in bite-sized pieces to where people can get just what they need for the particular topic. So, there's a section on getting a library card, which is kind of, you know, the beginning of your library experience. Then the next section is the library catalog, how to navigate that, placeholds, use your account, things like that. And then events, so we talk through what we have to offer children and families, age ranges of our program, what does it mean when we say kids, what does it mean when we say teens, that sort of thing, how to find information about the events, our newsletters, et cetera. And then our community branch map section is like physically how to navigate the library. So, in here, we link to the new virtual maps that we have online, which helps people see, you know, before they go into the library, what they might be experiencing, where are the children's sections, where are the teen sections, where are the bathrooms, et cetera. Early literacy, this is a lot of resources for those parents, especially of young ones prior to school to help them get ready to read. And this is a lot of information that we find parents sometimes benefit from helping, like there's a lot of tools that are sort of not talked about, like you read or you don't read, but there's elements of learning how to read and of literacy that we incorporate into our storytime. So, there's a lot of information about each of those elements that helps parents know it is good to sing and rhyme with your kid. That is a tool that helps them learn how to read when they get to that point. So, there's a lot of information there. Then there's a section on homework help and this is generally for your older kiddos. And there's a little bit about our databases plus our physical resources like study rooms and computers, et cetera. And then the next section is homeschooling resources, since we have a lot of homeschoolers in the community, just some targeted resources for those. We have some external links to common websites and things that might be of interest to people who are homeschooling, as well as some of the resources again, like meeting rooms if you have a homeschool co-op, there's a space that you can use for your meetings, et cetera. There's a little bit of duplication in some of these, some of the information fits in multiple categories, so when you see it, you might see some things repeated, it just kind of depends upon the nature of the topic. And then the last one is the monitoring content, which is a lot of resources about how to help find exactly what you need and don't want for your children and how to navigate that, both digitally as well as our physical resources and some external websites that can give lots of tools, as well as some links to our databases like Novelist that I've shared before. So, that's it in a nutshell. There's a lot of content, there's a lot of work that's gone into this from kind of cross-departments, from communications to IT, to youth services, to branch managers, a lot of input. So, I'm really pleased with the final product. I think it's something that we'll update pretty regularly as we get feedback about what is useful and what is not and what people would like to see, that kind of thing. So, it'll be, you know, I think an organic tool that we can continue to make better for our community and our library users.
Where's it fund the lift?
It will... That's a good question. I think it'll be on the library menu that has like links to services and...
Okay.
But I'm actually not positive about that, so I will let you know.
Okay.
I appreciate that you're utilizing, like the library website already had a lot of information, but for parents to be able to just go and see it all in one location, that should hopefully minimize the need for the teen to constantly update different pages if they're just updating pages that are already there.
Yeah, exactly.
Anybody else have any questions or thoughts? Okay. Next on new business is new business and the Christian County Library Foundation Annual Report. I will let you talk.
Hi, I'm Shay Shoemaker and I am from the Christian County Library Foundation. I'm the president and we come once a year to make our annual report to you guys and kind of tell you what we've been up to. So, for those of you that might not know, the Christian County Library Foundation is different than the Board of Trustees. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and our job is to support the growth and expansion of library services. So, on our screen, we have some of the different things that we have funded this year and a little bit of description of the funds that we have given for different things that go to the library. So, and then we have some pictures of some of these fun things as well. So, we've given some money for the library of things. Yard game collection and clever, a new more accessible pop-out window for driving through an Ozark if you'd ever been before, it was tricky, you kind of had to get out of your car, but not all the way out of your car. And so, one of the things we really do is whenever the library comes to us with something that is like an accessibility thing, we always prioritize those because that's important to make sure that everybody's accessible for to be able to reach the library resources. Let's see what else we've got. We did a teamwork table in Sparta, they didn't have this table in that space and needed a study area. New spine level printers for collection department and some additional disc cleaners for an Ozark. In clever, they needed an accessible outdoor programming area, a picture table. One of the things we did last year was they had a problem with the speed bumps and someone was coming in their wheelchair and was not able to actually get to the library because of the speed bumps. So, this is another thing for those in wheelchairs that they can be accessible to the outdoor space. Mobile printing in all four of the community branches. So, I have not used that one yet, but I'm excited to because that'll just help, I think, with the librarians as well, so they aren't always being tied up by printing requests and things. So, those are some of the fun things we've got to use some of our funds for this year. And then we also did a community connection with the Riverside Inn Centennial Celebration at the mill and partnered with the library and the historical society and they had a really beautiful event celebrating Dan Garrison and some of his artwork that they showcased from the historical society and had a wonderful evening. We got to be there and make some community connections and things, which will be so very fun. And then we also are looking at helping with the plans for the renovation of the new space and the exciting things that are happening there. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks Shay. Next on new business is the library recordings of Board of Trustees meeting. This is on here, it was brought up in the public comments last month, that we do record all of the meetings and they are not accessible on the website where the minutes and agendas and other information is. So, per Echo's request, we did add it to this agenda to kind of discuss what that looks like and I'm just going to kind of open it up to discussion amongst the board of what you guys, your thoughts on the recordings of the Board of Trustees meetings being added to the website with the agendas and minutes.
Is there any problem with having, from website space, specifically what I'm thinking of, any problem with having the recordings uploaded?
No, because we're linking to their store basically through YouTube, so we'd be linking out instead of like storing it on the web server. So, no, it's not a storage issue.
Is it video or audio?
It's both. It's video and audio.
Does the library have a YouTube channel?
We do. We do. So, it's the recordings right now are just password protected, so they're just a record of what's happened, but they're not publicly accessible unless someone, if someone requests them, then I send them back information that we haven't posted them on our website yet.
My... I don't think I have a problem with them being reviewed because there's times where I go back through my notes and or go back through, you know, different comments people make, I'd like to review things. I would be concerned about the information being copied and used outside the confines of accessing it to view as a library item. I would not want... I don't think we would want anyone, we have people of many different ages in here, I don't think it would be right to just let things be used indiscriminately outside. Would there be able to be protections that, yes, they can be viewed, you know, people can access, they can view them, but that they are, I don't know if it was copyrighted or what, or just, yeah, disclaimer that, no, these are not to be used for other purposes other than reviewing what the board and the community has discussed.
I don't know that, I mean, like I think we could say this is, you know, a property of the library, but I don't think, I mean, once it's out, you know, on video, it's kind of fair game for people to view.
Okay, I just, you know, now, you know, like political ads, you just see everything, everybody everywhere, it just can... I understand information being used for a purpose, being used to be reviewed, but if things are taken out of context, which anybody in here could be taken out of context positively or negatively, and I don't think that would be fair for the people who, especially for the people who are standing in and representing the community, I would want to protect everybody's rights.
I think just from my perspective, as like with library records and the library's face, it is a public forum, so once you come here and speak, it is sort of fair game. And, you know, some people already do and the audience records, so I think having a full and complete record that's the library's is good for the library, depending whether or not we post it online.
Okay.
But I don't, like I totally understand your concern, I don't want to go viral myself, but I don't know that we have any legal standing to prevent it, if that makes sense.
Okay. And we know that it's, that there are already portions that are being recorded and in that sense, any video that's taken outside of that video could be taken out of context where that record at least is full and complete.
I would hope people would just be protective of each other.
I do wonder for, you know, the amount of effort that I know we have an obligation to provide the agenda and the minutes and to making those public. We did agree a short time back about the public comment request form and materials that come with making those available. And I know, I was just recently going through the minutes to look for an item a couple weeks ago and identified, you know, that there is effort that's going in by, I'm assuming by Tori, to go through and redact information and then upload, but if we're already going to have a full and complete record in the recording, I wonder if we might consider as a board, instead of making that information available, that we have a consistent minutes, agenda, minutes, recording in lieu of the public policy packet.
Because the comments would be there.
Because the comments would be there, that's correct. And it would reduce any effort to redact. We no longer need to do that.
Because the public comment policy or public comment form has names and sometimes, you know, emails and things that we...
I think people's identity.
Well, I'll make a motion then to include the recording on the library website and my motion would include removing the public comment packet.
So, just have the whole recording rather than uploading?
So, sort of in lieu of?
In lieu of, yes.
The agenda, the minutes, and the recording.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second, just a second.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. I was like, you know.
Just a second, sorry. Would you include the board packet that we've been posting also?
Oh, I think that's appropriate, yeah.
So...
Agenda, minutes, board packet.
And recording for each meeting, okay.
So, basically, the recording would replace the need to post the public comments portion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure for how I write it out.
Is there a second on that motion?
Yes.
Second, okay. Is there any discussion, anyone have any questions on the motion?
So, I don't know that I see the value of taking that detail out because I think the discussion is not the same as the information that we're provided. So, in that sense, I think we'd be missing that information, that people have spent the time to prepare. So, I think in fairness to the public who's investing time to prepare materials to submit, we should respect that and include that as a part of this business meeting because that is a part of this business meeting.
Tori, I have a question. What percentage of the things that you're uploading are just a script of what's being said versus additional information that's being?
It really varies. It really varies, so...
And then is the only thing being redacted, is it just like the phone numbers and emails?
Yes, but sometimes we get, I mean, it does take quite an amount of time, that is a true thing, because sometimes people give, well, like this is for one public commenter, this packet. So, obviously in three minutes, you can't, you know, and it's front and back, so I have to, like if they give something that's like unstapled, so I have to unstaple this, copy it all front and, right, this one is like, some of them...
Okay, this isn't public comments, thank you. This isn't public comments, thank you.
That is a good example of another, sometimes they're bound, so I have to like make, you know, there's a fair amount of administrative work if that's part of the concern and trying to get those prepped for posting.
I guess my concern in addition to that would be, you know, some of the materials that we've seen come through are direct copies from books and I do personally question if there isn't some kind of copyright infringement when we're posting copies that are directly made of books. I mean, personally, the other aspect of that is if we're discussing having something available to the public that's a full and complete, you know, reflection of the events that occurred in the board meeting, then the material, we're not going through all of the material page by page more quickly in three minutes.
Okay. Is there any other, any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. Anyone else have anything? Okay. We'll move into a vote on the motion. Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Trustee Sisinski.
Aye.
Since it is a tie, I vote and I vote in favor, so we'll change that policy. Not easy to make everybody happy, nor do I think we will ever make everybody happy, but I think continuing to have these conversations is important.
I do think it's progressive though of our county to have a recording that is being made available, not all of the, of the, of the different entities within the county have a recording that's be available to the public. So, I do think that's, there's no reason not to.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Okay, let's move on to the pre-design services proposal.
Okay, so I shared some, two proposals and estimates for pre-design services, so just a little context of what this is. There's one from Paragon and one from SAP Design. So, this is the very, very early hopes and dreams phase of what might be possible with a renovation of this facility here in Nixet. So, the first step is what an entity like Paragon or SAP would do for us is to, number one, see what is possible with the building, what our limitations are, what walls can be moved, what, you know, we have a concrete walled server room that might present some challenges, that sort of thing. So, they would be looking at this space and coming up with a plan of what's possible. The second thing that they would do would be providing a cost estimate, very rough, but a cost estimate of what it would take to do a renovation, which would be needed for us to plan anything else. And then the third thing that this would provide would be some renderings for some ideas for renovating the space, pretty pictures that we could then use to take to people with lots of money and say, please help us make this pretty picture come to life. So, that's a very important element when it comes to asking people to support the library in that way. So, the thought is ideally to do a capital campaign of some kind to raise the funds to do a renovation because we wouldn't be able to fund that in, within our operating budget. I don't know what the costs will be, but I'm certain we will not be able to fund it within our current budget, so unless we pay for it over like 30 years, so... So, SAP, I'll start with SAP Design Architects. They sent the proposal that is about $20,000 for this process and they include, talk about what they include, which is meetings, 90 hours of architectural services, the services of an engineer consultant. They asked some questions specifically about the HVAC and they, they wanted to incorporate HVAC assessment and planning into their particular process, although I don't know if that's a necessity because I think we can assume we'll be replacing all of the HVAC system in a renovation because of the age of the existing system. And then provide initial designs plus a round of revisions and then there's extra cost if we want basically more renderings. SAP is the company that we used before my time, but in the building of both Sparta and clever, as well as the renovations of this branch and the Ozark branch back in 2016, 17, somewhere in there, six years ago, 17. So, they know our facilities, they know kind of our budgets, they know our brand. They, they do a lot of library work. I know a lot of libraries who have worked with them. They are very thorough and I think sometimes that comes through in their costs as well. So, Paragon, I actually ended up just in a meeting where somebody was there from Paragon and they were talking about their working on designs for Springfield County Library and their republic branch renovations. And Paragon has been one of the bid to do that. And so, I was just in a meeting where they were there talking about that. So, I was like, hey, we got a project and they're like, we'd love to talk to you, you know, and then they followed up with me, which was kind of nice for them to, they were eager, I would say, to talk to us. And so, their quote is about half of the cost, which of course is attractive. And I was trying to figure out like where, where's the difference? And I think probably in the number of hours that they would be spending on it and maybe that HVAC assessment as well. I feel like what they are offering is, is what we need, like it would cover what we need. And if it wasn't, I think we could add more hours and pay more, but to just start out, I think they offer a lot. They, I would say, I've talked to a lot of library director friends who have gone through the process, I would say both are good with libraries, but Paragon has a really good rapport with a lot of library directors. I think they find them really easy to work with and respectful of constraints on budgets and things like that in a way that just makes them a little bit easier to work with, not that SAP is bad at all. So, that's what I know about the two companies. So, the question really, I'd like some guidance for kind of next steps of this from you to see kind of where you think. We can get a third quote with this amount, even 10,000, we would typically have three quotes. I don't, there's a couple of other companies out there that I'm familiar with, like Dake Wells, and I don't know if any of you know if some architects or design firms that you would recommend, but I can, I can do that. The, we will be asking the foundation to help cover some, maybe all of the costs, especially if it's a lower end cost, like $10,000. So, this wouldn't necessarily have a huge impact upon the library's budget. So, I can get a third quote, I can, we can just pick one of these and go with it, I can go back to SAP if we're really interested in, I'm kind of continuing on with them and ask if they can lower their costs and just say, we can only spend, you know, we only want to spend $10,000, so, you know, can you give us just a little bit less thorough and go with that? So, thoughts, questions?
Did either Paragon or SAP tell you what their hourly rate is for architecture?
No.
Okay. I would like to, I would like to know what that was, because that would, that would tell me a lot. And I tend to think we probably ought to get a third quote as well.
Okay.
I agree, I agree. I feel like this came up with the parking lot resurfacing. What is our legal requirement to get an RFP if we're talking about upwards of $26,000?
By policy, we don't, it's, it's more of a policy thing than a legal requirement. By policy, it has to be, it's over $30,000 before we do an efficient resurfacing.
There's just a discrepancy in the prices. I'd like more detail as to why.
Yeah, even if we could come up with like a middle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Someone's $15,000.
Yeah. So, I can tell you, Paragon, being a local... So, I, I can tell you, Paragon, being a local architect, they've won a lot of small business awards, so they're used to working with smaller businesses, because they themselves are a small business, so they understand financial constraints, which is why them being lower doesn't surprise me, being that much lower. I would like to see if, if we get a third and they're closer to SAP, then going back to, I almost want to go to Paragon and be like, what are they offering us that you're not?
Yes.
But I, I do like the idea that Paragon is local and being a community library, working with a local business.
Always. It almost looks like this one is more itemized, the Paragon is more itemized than the SAP one, and you did call out the HVAC assessment, so it would, would Paragon not, since it's not in their itemized list, is that not something that they would provide? Or could they ask what it would, since we do know...
They would, they would probably consider it, but they may not hire an engineer consultant to come assess it, like SAP had put in their list of things.
It's good to know from Paragon, like, on the SAP quote, they said maximum of 90 hours of architectural service. It'd be, it would be good to know from Paragon if there's a, if there's a, if there's a cap on their hours as well.
So, I'll plan on getting a third quote. Do you, do you have, do you have the time to wait until the next meeting to do this? Yeah, I think so, but also, like, if you want me to just choose from there and then update you after that, it's kind of, it's a low enough amount that by policy, it's not something that you would always have to vote on, so that's kind of up to you, too. I don't mind bringing it back, but if you would rather just say, get a third quote, then go with whatever makes sense and find a proceeding with that as well. Is there a sense of what you...
I think we're getting a third quote and discussing it again.
Okay, yes, okay.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
All right, I think, I mean, I think it's good for you guys to understand the process, especially at this point, and, you know, I'm learning things, too, like, even what you call this process is a pre-design process, it's planning to plan, so it will be good learning experience for all of us. Any other things that, like, you have questions about that you would, like, address in any of their quotes, other than, like, what Diana, you said about the hourly architect rate?
Okay, and just because of my ignorance regarding the HVAC, so we know it has to be addressed. Is that part of this or not part of this, or how much would it cost if it was part of this? Could we, it seems a lot to go through all of this two times. You know, they're going to have to look at walls, they're going to have to look at piping, they're going to have to look at electricity. To me, that would involve the HVAC system rather than having to go over and do it again.
For this process, it's not, like, as thorough as, like, an inspection kind of thing. They're going to be asking me questions, looking at the plans, so they'll know, it's an old system, we need to update it, plan on $200,000 or $300,000. Like, that's what I would expect they would be putting in the quote.
Pardon, how much?
$200,000 or $300,000.
To update...
Yeah, because we've got, we have 18, 16 or 18 units, so when we have the inspection, that's what he said, it's going, if you had to, if they all failed at once, that's $200,000.
Okay.
It's like, okay, that's a big number.
That answers the big question, yes, it does.
It looks like we need to include the timeline, because one of these can have this done by June, and the other will have this done by October, so that also seems pretty different.
So, I asked them, I think why SAP put that in there is they asked me, when do you need this done, and I thought, before we present the budget, so that's, I think, why they put the October first date. When I asked them, I did ask them...
Not necessarily their fastest available.
Right, right. I think they said, because I asked them, like, when you, to get it done by October 1st, how long do you need, and I feel like they said 60 days, like, that's what I have in my brain, because I was like, if we put it off till summer, it's fine. They're like, oh, yeah, that's fine. So, I think it'll be pretty similar for them. Do any of you have suggestions of other companies to talk to?
Who's your favorite architect?
Paragon would have been mine.
Okay, I'm familiar with Dake Wells, they did the Schweitzer Brentwood branch for Springfield Green County Library.
I think if somebody's familiar with libraries...
I'll probably check with the interim at Springfield Green, because they're in a bunch of building projects right now, so, okay.
Awesome.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for all that work. Annual MEC Resolution Review and Renewal.
This is our annual policy that we, for the Missouri Ethics Commission, we are just required to have a policy about conflict of interest and all of those pages there. So, we just need to adopt it, or if there's changes you need to make. We've had this one five-ish years, I think, Jordan?
And we can't change too much, because it's based very closely on a template that they give you that you have to adhere to.
Right.
Then who gives you...
So, if there are changes, we would have to probably get them approved first and bring it back to another, and we have to do this one by May 1st, so we might even have to call a special meeting.
Yeah.
So, what, so, sorry, what's changing in this version, or is it just an update?
Nothing.
So, it's just really just...
We have to adopt it.
24, okay.
We actually only have to adopt it every two years, but we do it every year, so we don't forget.
Yeah, the board at that time decided, like, let's make it our policy to do it every year, so that no one, if there's turnover or something, no one ever forgets to do it, because you can get fined for not having it in place.
But this doesn't, this doesn't change anything from what we already have?
No.
Correct. Okay. That's, that's the main thing I wanted to know.
Yeah, except the signatories are different, and then they keep that on file, so if, if you were to approve it and sign it, then I just email it to the, the people, and they keep it on file at the state.
Is there a motion? Do we make a motion to adopt it?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustee Brazil, or Alexander?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Sazinski?
Aye.
All right, that one was easy. Okay, we are now moving into the public comment section of the meeting. As per the board's public comment policy, as a general rule, the board will not respond to public comments at the time they are made. The board may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action at their discretion. Questions for staff about library operations should be made during normal business hours. As I stated last month, please keep decorum, have respect, and no raising of voices. I will ask you to take a breath, and then if you continue to raise your voices or be disrespectful, you will be asked to leave. Also, the same request of last time, no leaving and coming back. If you need to take a break, you can go to the middle section in between there, but once you've left the library, we do request that you not come back in, just for safety reasons. That's just a request that we have. As a heads up, it is a 30-minute public comment period. Everyone who's speaking has three minutes. We have 12 people who have filled out forms, which means, at best, two people will not get to speak. If you would like to cede your time when I call your name, you are welcome to do so. What I will do to make things move a little bit quicker is I will call the first person. Before their time starts, I will let the second person know that they are up, so that they can come over and be closer and not have to take that time to come to the podium. So, when the second person is coming up, I will call the next person and so on, so that you guys can get as many through as possible, and we can, I would love to get through all 12 if we can. So, that being said, first up is Beth Holtz, and in the batters box is Aileen Nakina.
Okay, I've heard it reported in previous library board meetings that the conservative group represented here are the minority group. At the last library board meeting, seven out of the eight speakers were for the conservative side. Back in December, six out of the seven speakers were for the conservative side, and my research, Missouri ranks in the top 10 highly conservative states. In the last presidential election, the lowest percentage of voters for conservative candidate in Christian County was 72.3%. I think this shows Christian County, Christian County is made up of a majority of conservatives. In February, there was a Brave Book tour that came to the library in Springfield. The Springfield News Leader posted an article that the LGBTQ community was trying to rally support against the Brave Books. They wanted their supporters to come out and protest the event. I was there, and only 15 to 20 people came out to support their side. However, the number of people in support of the Brave Books, Brave Books was overwhelming. There were hundreds of people there to listen to these books being read. Representative Jamie Gregg introduced Bill HB 2648, which would require all library board members in the state to be elected positions. There were seven testimonies in favor of this bill and six against this bill. Of the six testimonies against this bill, four of the testimonies were representatives of libraries, one was a representative of the ALA, and only one private citizen was against this bill. If my statistics are correct, 92.1% of the testimonies are for this bill being passed. We need to change since the current library board members are not willing to listen to the public and take action to what we are requesting. We are not singling out the Christian County Library Board. This fight is happening all across America, and the conservative side is winning. We are constantly seeing success stories, and we know one day soon, Christian County will be one of the success stories that we have cleaned up our library, our public library. Only 7.2% of U.S. adults identify as LGBTQ and 3.8% in Missouri. 9.5% of the youth population ages 13 to 17 identifies as LGBTQ and 1.9% in Missouri. So, I would like to know why we have so many books in the library that cater to this group, and to be pushing these books to children that are younger than the youth population is appalling. I've been coming to these meetings since September and have yet to see the library board act on our request to move these books to another area in the library where young children don't have easy access to them. Last month, we pulled more than 30 offensive books from the children's and youth sections. It is evident that nothing is being done about our requests, because the books were returned to the shelves within two weeks. Our job as Christians and as adults is to protect our children. How can we say we are protecting them when we are exposing them to obscene materials that they can't even comprehend? Some of these books are targeting kids who can't even read, but they can look at the pictures. My goal in speaking tonight is to call the board to action for making changes in our library and to clean it up. We all have a responsibility to the next generation not to continue this corruption. As Christians, we have been silent too long, and this is the price we are paying. We will not give up this fight until our children are safe, to look at books on the shelves, and not be subjected to the filth that is currently there.
Thank you. Aileen Nakina. Juanetta, right, you're up after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since the last board meeting, the concerning stack of books that I brought to you have been returned to the shelves without any changes. In contrast, meanwhile, in Camden County, the age-inappropriate content from their children's section are now officially being labeled, flagged, and re-shelved in the adult section. Parents who do not want their child to access this content can now feel safe to bring their child to the library again, and parents who want their child to have access to this content can walk their child straight over to the challenge book section. Win-win. Camden County officially voted to adopt the policy changes that I presented to you at our last meeting, and our catalog system, Missouri Evergreen has proven capable of handling these changes. I've included in your handouts examples of three challenge book titles in the Missouri Evergreen system, so that you may see how they appear in our catalogs. So, it seems obvious to me that if Camden County is having such success with changes that allow patrons to either access or avoid this challenged material, that we should also look at their policies, but also at their system, Missouri Evergreen, as an alternative to Mobius and our current software. When I was looking into this, however, I discovered something that appears to be a conflict of interest. I discovered on Mobius's website that our executive director, Renee Brummett, is on the board of Mobius, whom we have a contract with. I have questions that I think should be answered, such as, were you aware that our director sits on the board of Mobius? Has she signed a conflict of interest statement for Mobius? And if so, could that prevent her from acting in our library's best interest? Are you aware that Mobius lost state supplemental funds in 2005, but Missouri Evergreen is partially supplemented by state funding? And how will you ensure that the public can trust our director's decisions on these matters after they have not been disclosed to the public? I pose these questions so that the board can look into these matters, but also to ensure that potential cost-saving, problem-solving software is not taken off the table simply because of the board seat that our director holds. In your handouts, you will find several tabs with information about Missouri Evergreen. I spoke with Camden County Library earlier today to find out more about the software, and it turns out that they made the switch from the exact same software that we currently use, and Mobius, in 2019, to Missouri Evergreen. Their reasons for the switch included cutting costs and obtaining the benefits for partnering with public libraries across the state for interlibrary loans. It's used by nearly half of all Missouri public libraries, whereas Mobius is only used by 11. If Camden County is onto something, and they've made the switch and cataloged 25,000 more books and circulating items than us with a fourth of our operating budget, then we could do the same. I hope you will look into this information and give it serious consideration. Stewardship of taxpayer dollars and transparency matter. And with that, I hope you will respond to my questions. I know we are out of time, though. Did you guys know that Renee held that position? Aida, nobody else is going to respond? All right, thank you.
Kevin, I'd like to make a quick comment. I'd like to add this to a future board agenda, please, so if you'd like, I can email it, or we can take it from there.
Kevin, you're up after Juanetta.
My name's Juanita.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm not offended. All right, these website changes are just tinkering around the edges. There needs to be an overhaul of replacement of those age-inappropriate books, period. I've been attending these library board meetings for almost a year now. I was shocked and horrified by what I saw and heard in the first meeting from both the pages of books from the children's section of the library, and by the attitude of the board and some of the speakers. The thing that sent it over the top for me was the attitude and statements by the board members and director that there was nothing they could do. It's just too difficult, too expensive and time-consuming to work with us on developing a solution to deal with placing these age-inappropriate books. We now know that is a lie, because a rapidly growing number of other public libraries in the state of Missouri and across the nation facing this same issue are putting their shoulder to the wheel and blazing the way with marvelous innovative solutions. However, a year later, the resistance continues. Over the last year, we've been marginalized, ignored, called names from the speaker's podium, and called right-wing Christian nationalists multiple times on social media by people supporting the child-targeted placement of pornography. At one point, we were even told by a board member that if we made any noises or reacted whatsoever, that the meeting would be shut down. Thankfully, our state representative spoke at the next meeting and made it clear that the First Amendment applies to us also. Recently, several individuals, including myself, who have been childhood victims of abuse by pedophiles, have come forward and shared impassioned personal stories. One of the speakers made the comment that we should just listen to the experts, and that she was tired of hearing stories of abuse. Well, my first comment to that statement would be this: I'm sure that someone who is a proponent of this perverse filth being presented to children wouldn't want to hear personal stories and evidence of where it leads. My opinion, the pedophilia often begins with childhood exposure to pornography, is backed up by experts, such as Dr. Carolyn Giraud, a clinical professor and psychiatrist at the University of California Davis Medical Center. Dr. Giraud states in a 2021 article, exposing children to pornography should be forbidden and better regulated, as it is violating their spiritual boundaries and evolving beliefs around bodies, sexual development, and intimate relationships in a similar way that directs sexual abuse on their body does. If this trauma is not identified and processed, the survivor runs the risk of re-acting as an attempt to resolve what once left him or her powerless, or of even engaging in other criminal behaviors. In layman's terms, eventually abusing other children. And as for the Christian nationalist accusation, I won't engage in name-calling. It's ugly, childish, and ungodly, but I will say this: most of the founding fathers and even giants of the civil rights era like Martin Luther King Jr. would have been considered, by their beliefs, to be so-called Christian nationalists. I think we're in good company.
David, you're up after Kevin.
Last month, there was a stack of books pulled out of the shelves at this very library. There were, they were in the children and young adult section. Citizens are concerned that those books are inappropriate for minors. You kept those books off the shelves to review for less than two weeks, and then put every one of them back on the shelf. No changes were made, they were simply put back on display and are still available to the children. Since you placed those books back on display, I must assume that three of the five board members and the directors still think that children should have unfettered access to lewd and inappropriate material. I've handed you excerpts from a few of those books. You placed this material back on the shelves with full knowledge of the content for children to see and read. Would one of you please read aloud from any of those excerpts right there that are in those books that you put back on the shelves? No response.
This is our opportunity to hear you.
I don't want that taking off my time. I'm going to take just a few more seconds. If you're not going to speak to me and have a conversation, then don't talk.
Your time is, your time is going, sir. Your time is going, sir.
I'm not going to stop. How about the excerpt from Flamer? That is in the young adult section. Nobody, if you will. An excerpt from "It Feels Good to Be Yourself," a book about gender identity. This book targets first and second graders. Page three says she's a transgender girl. That means she was born, everyone thought she was a boy. Page nine says Alex is a boy and a girl. Page 11 says JJ is neither a boy nor a girl. Page 21 says Ruthie was five when she told her parents, "I know. You think I'm a boy, but I really feel like a girl." Is this appropriate for first graders? This book's not even labeled, flagged, or at the very least placed in the adult section in this library. That you do not read this aloud speaks volumes. If what children and young adults, what you feel they can have access to, you couldn't read it here without your face is turning red, then obviously it doesn't belong in this library with our public dollars paying for it. A couple of weeks ago, there was a public hearing in Jeff City for the House Bill 2648, sponsored by Representative Jamie Gregg. There was an overwhelming amount of witness testimony in support of that bill. Seventy submitted citizens submitted testimony in support of making board seats elected positions. Only six people submitted testimony in opposition. Of those six, four wrote, "Representative Public Library." One was an MLA, Missouri Library Association lobbyist, and only one testimony in opposition was from an individual. Large amounts of that testimony came from Christian County. I recommend you read and watch those witness testimonies. The people you're supposed to be representing are not happy. We are not going anywhere. We're here to defend the children in our community. This material is not acceptable. Mighty God, I ask you, please forgive my nation, forgive my community, forgive me, Father. We repent and seek your mercy for the harm that's being done to these children.
James, you're up after David. James McDonald.
All right. I want to give a warning that the material I'm going to read is not appropriate for children. And if you have a child, you should remove them from this room. All right. So the very first book is the pronoun book. It states, "She among the individuals." There's a older man with a mustache saying "she." There's another illustration that shows an older man with a beard above his head reads "they." The illustration on this page depicts several individuals with speech bubbles announcing their pronoun as "they." Anti-racist baby. "We demand justice, equity now, Black Lives Matter, and climate justice is racial justice." Babies are taught to be racist, are anti-racist, there's no neutrality. Depicted in the reflection of the binocular's right lens is a light-skinned person with blond hair at the top of the intact ladder, holding up a trophy. The reflection on the left lens of the binocular depicts a dark-skinned person reaching for a broken ladder, wrung, as the top of the ladder is broken off, just allowing that person to continue to climb up the ladder. In picture book, she had a book, what he just read, "It Feels Good to Be Yourself," a book about gender identity. Again, it has intersex, gender identity, transgender, and non-binary. Then there's another picture book, "When Aiden Becomes a Brother," by Kyle Lukoff. That's at NIXA and Sparta. But Aiden didn't feel like any kind of girl. He was really another kind of boy. Transgender kids like him. The illustration on this page contains a book with tape covering boys and girls. A few months ago, I read Flamer to you guys. I really hated doing that. I really don't want to do it again. But you guys continue to keep it in the library collection. All right, so let's go through one. Let's see. "I wonder if priests jerk off." Sure, boy, boy, I'll leave you alone once you stop being such a gay fat fuck. "We're each busting the load into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it. Ha, ha, ha. Give me that, I'll show you." Then another one, "Sex Plus: Learning, Loving, and Enjoying Your Body," again, in the YA by Lacy Green, here in NIXA. I'll go through some of them. Basically, a uterus smoothie. Mmm. If you want to make sure you smell nice, perhaps you're expecting a visitor between your legs, just place a small dab of perfume between your thighs. No harm to the vag, and it works like a charm. All right. Religious texts like the Bible have been interpreted many ways throughout history. Study their history and how they've been used to harm and uplift people throughout history. Offer interpretations that call for us to embrace one another. Challenge yourself and your faith leaders to make your congregation even more accepting. Types of sex toys, dildos, popular choices seem to include vegetables, hairbrushes, handles, makeup brush handles, candlesticks. She got the idea. G-spot vibrator, magic wand, masturbation sleeves, prostate massager, butt plugs, and anal beads, cock rings. That's what you guys kept.
All right. James McDonald. Emma, you're next.
Appreciate this time. My name is James McDonald. I'm a resident of Ozark and a Christian. I'm here to request sexually explicit gender-bending material be kept in an adult-only accessible area, available to be checked out only by adults. In a previous board meeting, excerpts from graphics sexually and sexually. In this meeting, sexually-oriented books from young people's section of our library were read. There's also been an observation that this material is completely legal, which is true. Consider the idea of a parent dropping off a child at play along Massey and NIXA or Highway 14 in Ozark and telling the child to have fun. I'll pick you up in a few hours. Christian County libraries are similar, inviting littered with open dangers. In the case of a child, a busy road, the whole community would rise up about talking about parental neglect. In the case of libraries, they're elements in our society which beat their chest and pride in how open-minded they are and how narrow-minded, censor-driven, judgmental, and outrageously restricted the opposition is. They are quick to call names, which ironically is very judgmental. While most of society considers a parent to have full responsibility for the physical safety of a child, there seems to be elements in society that bore the idea of a parent being equally responsible for teaching a child right and wrong. Somehow, they think a complete stranger with no personal regard to the child is better positioned to make such decisions. At best, this is ignorance; at worst, this is pure evil. A child needs guidance from a parent to learn how to live and to thrive in our culture. The following is a famous biblical reference from the Jewish Torah and from the Christian Old Testament, and concerns responsibility of a parent towards one's child. "And these words that I command you today shall be in your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your children. You shall talk of them when you sit in your house and when you walk by the way, and when you lie down, and when you rise." Ignoring discussions of right and wrong and focusing on the results, what is known is that people in alternative lifestyles, illustrated in these books, have increased mortality rates. This is afforded by many studies. I have referenced one in the footnotes in what I handed you. Here's a quote from her opening paragraph. "There is now compelling body of science that documents elevated risks for a host of poor mental health, substance use outcomes, from LGBTQ+ populations compared to their cisgender and heterosexual peers. The writing of this article is advocating for a study of better policy to protect the LGBTQ+ community." I support that, by the way. She is not a right-wing conservative. Certainly, suicide is a major contributor, along with disease and other factors. This lifestyle is a demonstrable threat to a child's physical health, mental health, and life expectancy. A responsible parent will pay attention and not expose their children to such things. "So then each of us will give an account of himself to God," is a quote from the New Testament. What is being requested here is a fence from the playground to protect the child from dangers as perilous as busy roads. Thank you.
Well, Emma, you're up after Emma.
Okay, so I'm Emma. I'm 15 years old. I'm a child, and I go to the NIXA High School, and I just want to talk about the books being removed from my library. So one of the books that was challenged is Harper Lee's famous "To Kill a Mockingbird", which is a really good book. It's a book about two siblings whose dad defends a black man falsely accused of rape. It was banned for racial concerns or challenged. People want to ban books to prevent their kids from reading about violent racist and sexist real-world problems, such as poverty, race discrimination, and sexual assault. People have freedom to read whatever they want, and by taking away these books from public libraries, it takes away amazing opportunities to learn and grow from the author's work. Although these books may come off as disturbing or violent to them, they actually help people learn about the world, what may happen, and how to handle it. Limiting kids from books denies them educational opportunities, opportunities to learn about new viewpoints other than their readers' own. It limits the reader's ability to see themselves represented in literature and create their own personal connection with the story. Reading real-world problem books help people realize what others go through and create sympathy for them and their situations. These books are written for a reason. They're written to express the author and their work. Nobody should decide and control what others read. Limiting information in books hides the truth, and kids deserve to know the truth about things, especially in the world that they're growing up in, whether it's good or bad. It should not be hidden and covered up with the excuse that it's for protection. Not only does it affect children trying to learn, it also affects children of color having to see books written by colored authors taken out of their very own school library for protection. Book banning just doesn't set a good example for people growing up seeing everything happening around them. If we keep banning books and taking them out of libraries, it could lead to a restricted community, one without a wide variety of learning opportunities that represents and includes everyone.
Lucas, you're up after Elizabeth.
Usually, I speak from my heart and brain. Tonight, I'm going to use the words of a very wise man, Dr. Klein Smith, Stephen Klein Smith, the former superintendent of NIXA schools. In a letter that he wrote to the Springfield News Leader recently, I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to hear what he had to say. For the sake of brevity, I may at times paraphrase. "In an era marked by unprecedented access to information, the resurgence of, excuse me, removal and restriction of books presents a paradox that threatens the very foundation of our collective intellectual process..." ...progress. "At first glance, the act of restricting might seem like a measure to protect certain sensibilities or maintain social order. However, this practice not only undermines the fundamental principles of freedom and open inquiry, but also poses a significant threat to the human race's capacity for growth, empathy, and understanding. This threat becomes particularly pronounced within the context of public schools, where the implications of book removal can have far-reaching consequences to the minds of young learners." And here are his reasons why. First, the stifling of critical thinking. "At the heart of any progressive society lies the ability to question, debate, and think critically. Books in their myriad forms serve as catalysts for this critical thinking, challenging us to see the world through perspectives different from our own. By removing books, we risk creating echo chambers that insulate us from the complex, often uncomfortable realities of the world. Intellectual isolationism is dangerous in any context." Second, the erosion of empathy. "Literature has the unique capacity to serve as a window into the lives of others. Fostering an understanding and empathy transcends cultural, racial, geographical boundaries. Through stories, we live countless lives, confront moral dilemmas, and grapple with the human condition in all its forms. Restricting and removing books that deal with challenging or controversial topics deprives not only the wider society, but especially young learners in public schools and in libraries." Three, the danger of historical amnesia. "One of the most insidious effects of book removal and restriction is its potential to erase or just distort history." There is a call to action here from Dr. K. "The restriction and removal of books is a regressive practice that undermines the very principles upon which enlightened societies are built. This threat is particularly acute in the context of books. One thing we can do is vote for boards that will help to expand empathy, critical thinking, and understanding amongst our children."
Lucas, you're next. Based on the time that we have left, he'll be our last speaker tonight.
Hello, members of the board. I'm here tonight to bring some attention to the historical precedent of backlash to making minority groups more visible. Our country has had to take many steps to fulfill its promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and for many, it still has a long way to go. Right now, as rapid claims of corrupting and grooming children continue flooding into our libraries, there is some comfort to be taken in the fact that none of this rhetoric is really new, and that we should relegate it to the dustbin as others have done in the decades before us. I would like to start with a topic that I'm sure the board and its half entirely of women will find amusing. The anti-suffrage movement of the early 20th century is now seen as a fridge movement of a bunch of sexist who didn't believe that women were capable of handling electoral responsibilities. But back then, many folks of either sex had their arguments and reasons. Those in the religious sector argued that women's suffrage was against God's will and that many women becoming political creatures would essentially strip them of their name moral character and to be used for raising children. There were those who claimed women simply did not have the mental capacity to comprehend the consequences of voting at the ballot. And by the late 1910s, when the First World War was causing paranoia on the home front, anti-suffragists slipped to the new tactic of supplying treason, socialist, folk civics, and German sympathizers. These arguments are also present in the struggle for African-American equality that go all the way back to the beginnings of American chattel slavery. Those who were in favor of enslavement and claimed that black people simply did not have the mental capacity to understand that very concept of freedom and should be kept in their cages for the safety of themselves and others. abolitionists of all backgrounds and creeds were called radicals and extremists and sometimes terrorists, that they were, and that they were wanting to change things too fast despite the practice of chattel slavery being over 200 years old in the continuous United States at the time. And during the civil rights era, the intelligence and comprehension skills of black people were once again called into question when it came to their right to vote. Every civil rights figure from Martin Luther King to Marcus Garvey, Rosa Parks, was called a commie, a red, and a Soviet spy. Hindsight sees through the hysteria every time, and with a gift of hindsight, we can see that those who were in favor of these moments of historical injustice were really after it. A group that they could control with ease via ignorance and disenfranchising. So when we hear the cries that books in our libraries must be censored, hidden from the general public, or outright banned, remember what was said once upon a time and listen to what we hear.
And I wasn't going to cut anybody's...
There was about a minute and a half left.
And I wasn't going to cut somebody short.
That's a minute and a half left.
The meeting is adjourned.